I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before anybody wishing to speak to counsel, I will let you know that I spoke with our attorney, our solicitor, and if it's repetitive of what's been going on in the past, if you've been here complaining about different things or bringing things up, I have the right to be able to stop you on that, so I'll just make you aware of that. So, is anybody wishing to address counsel?
Yes.
Did you get that in writing? Mr. Haddop?
Thank you for the time. What I want to report on today is facts, separate documents, and I'm gonna hand out some documents. And so what I want to talk about is on January ninth, twenty twenty-five, the DEP inspector Mellie Lewis and her supervisor Sean Cascaden did an inspection on East End Pump Station and Sewer Plant. After the inspection concluded, a violation was issued to the Eeds Group for failure to comply with Chapter three oh two regulations, failure of certified operator to establish and provide oversight for record-keeping, treatment plan operation, sampling procedures, and pump station operation. Now, these documents are not something that I wrote up, it's not a personal mangetah. These are documents that came from an independent agency, which was the DEP. The report also says that Mr. Morgan was aware of a power outage on Sunday, twelve twenty-nine, but did not check the pump station until midday on twelve thirty, twenty twenty-four, after receiving a call from Mr. Cascaden from the DEP. So during the inspection, there was no record-keeping for pump station checks or maintenance, no composite sampler, operation records, no calibration records for the pH meter, no records of chlorine adjustments. So on December ninth of twenty twenty-four, during an oversight inspection from the Eeds Group, I photographed Mr. Morgan driving in the sewer gate with Bo from the Eeds Group following him at twelve fifty-three PM. Bo parks his car to influence the building, gets in Mr. Morgan's truck, and they drive down around the sand filters and turn around and drive back up. Bo gets back in his car and follows Morgan out of the gate at thirteen oh five. The total time of them being inside the gate was twelve minutes. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention, you know, the taxpayers of our community are paying in excess of ten thousand dollars to the Eeds Group to oversee Mr. Morgan, which they were just cited for, for failure to do that. And we need them because Mr. Morgan failed the state board test for sewer plant operation. Now, I'm not picking on anybody in particular, I'm just stating it as a one-hundred percent fact that he took the state board test and failed it. So it was also a proven fact that he is at the sewer plant three to seven minutes a day. Some days, not even at all. It's also a fact that the Eeds Group was given a violation for the failure to provide the oversight. It's a fact that we've had six inches of sludge at the deepest point in the lagoons after six inches of operation with a licensed operator working there daily. Now, I know last month I showed a photograph of that sled shot showing six inches, and Mr. Morgan said that he could find a place where it would only be six inches too if he went down there to look. So my question would be, why don't any of the sewer sledge reports show that? Because Bo and Mr. Morgan did the sewer reports, if they could find a spot with six inches, certainly you'd want to include that in your report to make your averages lower. So I have a sewer inspection report from twenty twenty-two that states that the average depth was eight inches. So what that does is, that's an independent test by an independent agency that shows six inches of sludge. And so Jane, could you read what that says to me all right there?
An average depth of eight inches was not there.
Okay, so that was done after my job was lost. So that proves that I was telling the truth, that we had six inches of sludge in twenty twenty when I was dismissed, and then in twenty twenty-two, we had eight inches. And that's when the aeration failed. And again, I'm not pointing my finger, run somebody down in the ground. I'm stating the fact of what these records state. So, most kind of. I handed out these sledge reports from twenty twenty-three, one year later. That's these black papers that you all have in front of you. And if you look, the average for Lagoon number one is thirteen point eight inches, and the other two are twelve point seven inches. So we got sixty years of sludge in one year, and that's not me picking on anybody. Those are documents that were made by the Eeds Group and Brett, not me. So what are we gonna do? I mean, we've got all those years of sludge because something's going wrong. And so what we did was we voted last month to pay four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Eeds Group to tell us how to fix it. When I've been trying to help you people, and I've got the same credentials that the engineer has, and I've been trying to tell you people how to fix the plant for free, and I get no trespassing signs in front of me, and each group gives four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and he doesn't have any, I actually have more knowledge of the plant than he does because I was down there every single day for hours and hours and hours and hours and hours, studying everything. So if we look at the really big picture here, and this is proven in the ethics report, that Brett used his position to create a position of financial gain for himself. We've had no aeration down there for over two years. We have proof that he's only down there three to seven minutes per day. And we have a fact that the East End overflowed, don't draw sewage into ditch on twelve twenty-nine, and Brett didn't even think to go check it with a power outage. That's unfortunately is unethical. Even me, I haven't worked here in five years, but I know when the power goes out to go check the generator, and if I had a key, I could have got the thing going for free. But I'm, you know, if I go down there, I'm trespassing, and I'm a member of the community, and I have a lot of knowledge about the plant, and I'm met with severe resistance of, no trespassing, you're gonna be arrested if you're down there. I'm trying to help stop polluting the stream and give you advice of what you can do to fix your plant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Second for response? Second for response? Okay. So I'm just gonna make some statements, and I'm not gonna take any response from you to the point that, oh, you could find areas that have less and make the report look better. No, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna go with an average. And where the aerators are aerating, yeah, there's plenty of places in the middle of the pond that I could find zero and manufacture a zero and bring that down. It doesn't go to prove that the total sledge level is different. We do this every year, everybody uses a different method, and the independent company that we're using was, I'm assuming, CJ Wallace, our engineering firm that went out and did it with you. I went and did it with different methods with the Eeds Group. Yes, there are spots that have zero. There's also spots near the shore that probably have two and a half feet where it's built up and pushed towards the edge. So I'm not trying to hide anything when it comes to the sledge judging reports. There's definitely, when you get near the mixers, where you get near the solar bees, where there's absolutely nothing. But we're not looking for that, we're looking for an actual true average. So I find your report misleading, very misleading. The generator and the call-out on the date that you mentioned, in December, we had phone records right up till, and the Eeds Group and the DEP also have, where we had total monitoring of that station until the battery that had ten hours life failed. It was a twelve-hour outage, and we did have issues with the generator that we had fixed. It had set low coolant, we checked the coolant, it was fine, we had the generator completely serviced. I was down there today at noon, it was running. There was no, nothing that indicated to me that that pump station wouldn't be running under generated power. And I was able to visually monitor it from my phone. Every minute, it logs the exact footage of that station. The two hours after the battery dies, when I happened, Cascaden called me at nine, matter of fact, about two minutes after the power kicked back on and said that we had an issue. So there was an issue for maybe two hours. It was elevated, but not out of the range. I should have maybe checked the runtime on the pumps to see that they might have been running that time. This was a brand-new system, it'd only been in there for a little while. So, no, I don't agree with you, and I won't take any comment on it. But his points, while he might think they're valid, he has some pretty decent backup, but it's the way that he takes the test versus the way that we take the test. I won't deal with it.
Anybody else with any comments for the borough or questions?
Yeah, I was just looking at the minutes, and I, I'm gonna go back to that pickup truck deal that we're doing. And I'm just wondering, did we buy that yet or no?
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay, so where do we get that service? Where do we get the old ones? So I gotta get the service report from the last one because it seemed awfully high to me.
Where do we get them serviced? Either between Fleet Pride or Kettlinger Motors down in Countersport. We used to use Zooks, and we had some issues.
Oh, good, so you have looked around, that's good.
Oh, absolutely, we've been at Bradford, we've been in St. Mary's.
Good, because I was gonna recommend maybe up there at Fleet because I'm sure they do a great job and probably more reasonable than some of the closer ones here.
Shop rates are shop rates.
You know, dealers are, well, we all know that dealers are very high.
Before Fleet Pride, well, when it was Big Dog, before it was corporately owned, the shop rates were a little better.
Yeah.
But now it's corporately owned, and not as much latitude.
Fairly comparable. Yeah, well, that was really the one thing that I had, that I wanted to question. But the other thing I wanted to mention is that, and I know it's done now, it was mentioned that the truck was ten years old, but it's a twenty sixteen, so it really was only eight years old.
Well, we bought it. That might be the model year, but we bought it, I believe, in the end of fifteen or end of fourteen.
So when I look at that, and like I mentioned last time, the average life of a plow is somewhere between usually ten, a plow truck is ten to thirteen years and sometimes as much as twenty if it's properly maintained. It just seems like in this little borough, with the little bit of use that they really get with the two square miles that it's gotta cover, I still am of the opinion that nothing matters at this point, it's done. But I'm of the opinion that we've exchanged trucks prematurely.
Well, and I had said to you before that we've put a lot of money in trucks that were twenty years old, and we just see this better differently.
I'm not saying it's gotta go to twenty, but I'm not sure eight is the time. You know, if eight is good, five may be bad.
There's an election coming up, and I know we got a lot of spots open, so.
Yeah, I've got a lot of things to do, but I might consider it, yeah.
That's fine, go get your paperwork.
I may consider it. But anyway, I want to make mention of that because just as far as I'm concerned, you know, to trade a vehicle off every seven, eight years is premature, especially in this small borough.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'm just making mention of it is all. It's too late, I know, it's done. And that's, let me answer another thing, it's not much opportunity with the public comment being right at the very beginning of the meeting to have any input, unless we can have input throughout the meeting on the current issues for the meeting.
There's no good way to run a meeting. We can either do it with the elected officials, or we can do it with everybody, and it's just, it's not feasible.
I hear what you're saying.
If you take up on the offer and get your paperwork, you'll find that out.
But what I am saying is, really, the public comment isn't much good. It doesn't have much bearing on the rest of the meeting because it's in the very beginning.
Well, we can do it at the beginning, or we can do it at the end, but at the end, you can't get a vote.
Well, it's the same thing, really, I mean, if you can't have a public comment.
You can't have it both ways. You can either be the person who makes the decision, or you can be the person who comments on the decision.
I get it, well, it's easy to comment after the decision's made, but if you have no bearing.
Before or after, I'm just saying.
If you have no bearing.
We got eight hundred citizens, and we can't have every one of them here trying to make the decisions. That's why they vote on us.
And I know, you're lucky to get eight, but yeah, I get it. So anyway, that's all I have, really, I just, a couple of things I wanted to mention.
Jim?
I'm Harrison Williams, heaven's smiling down the night, I don't seem to know who.
Jim? Any other?
I couldn't hear you, Jim. I wasn't able to hear you.
I'm sure somebody's smiling on the night, I'm seeing only here from heaven.
Oh, yeah, 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 of course.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Jim.
I'm reading here, remove some snow piles to make room for more snow.
What's that?
Their maintenance report, remove some snow piles to make room for more snow. They're, yep, they didn't, I think, been troubled with snow this year, and there hasn't been really that much snow compared to what we've had before. Just, it was pretty steady. But the ice had built up along the curbs, especially on Main Street, and ice on the side streets. And I complained before about that truck up on High Street, been there all winter, never moved at all. You guys gotta do something about that before next winter.
Yeah, and that was one that I skipped, Mitch, going around when I was getting people and bringing them back and having Hurst send letters out. That is one I missed, up there on High Street. I know which one you're talking about.
And the streets are getting narrower. They're two foot from the curbs. And it's ice now, you can't do anything with it. And we're gonna get more snow, no doubt. And Main Street's not even cleared off. I went to the pizza shop one night and had a heck of a time. You can't get off the road, then you can't get onto the sidewalk. I think there needs to be more snow removal with tobacco, especially on Main Street. You know, and you can't wait till it gets warm and then refreezes because you can't move it.
Right, and this winter, some of the storms we had, you know, where it was coming down wet and then freezes up before you get a chance to do things with it, you know, we had some bad issues there too, you know, this winter with that.
Who makes a decision on what their maintenance guys do as far as whether to be cleaning Main Street or?
A lot of times, it's maintenance supervisor. You've got two people, and they've been working eight to ten-hour days and weekends, and then you have people on Main Street that won't move. And I understand we have a letter-writing ability, but if they don't move, and there was one specific individual that was running off an apartment in front of the pizza shop that would not move their car for a couple of days, they've since been evicted, that's great. But once it's all froze up, or you got somebody that, you know, they've been in the trucks for ten hours and it's the middle of the day, that's not a good place to move it. You get that huge vacuum on Main Street, I've personally done it. I've been out trying to move some stuff, and once the traffic picks up, you're not out there between one and three in the morning, you're not gonna be able to move anything for taking the chance of putting a vacuum bucket through somebody's vehicle. And then you go up, you move some snow, you get somebody bitching that there's not a place to put it on this property. There's been three different property owners that will not allow us to put snow on their properties, but then complain and bitch when we don't clean the parking lane. And Penda used to drop the wing plow and push everything back, but, oh, if we put snow on the sidewalk, then the residents complain. Well, where should we put it? We got two people that work very hard trying to keep the side streets clean, and I heard complain about the side streets, and I get it, they weren't great. But we're in the middle of a salt shortage, they cut us back from a three-to-one mix, and they put us to a four-to-one mix, which doesn't work well. We don't have a lot of traffic with the heat on the tires to break it down. It ain't that simple. We've had a more old-fashioned or a colder winter, and when it gets below thirteen degrees, salt doesn't work. So Route Six has been shit all year. I think our guys have done a hell of a job trying to get stuff moved, and move some snow piles. And I get that it could be pushed back, but if you move through it or can't get it, you can't get it, and then unfortunately, you have to wait.
Would these cars ever park and block it so they can't do their job? Then you need to get an ordinance and get them towed.
We have an ordinance, and like I talked to you before, when I moved the snow pile and you bitched to me because I was moving the snow around said car, which shouldn't have happened, you're right. I said, okay, so we'll go get it towed. You know who's paying for it? You, just like me moving the snow. Not you as the person, but you as the taxpayer. And we get it hauled out at the taxpayer's dime, and we'll never get it back. I understand that maybe police force could be a thing. You gotta pay a hundred grand a year for a cop in this small town? It's a give and take, as far as I'm concerned. You know, they're not gonna listen to Brett Morgan or Tom Gere. You go tow it up, that you think that company's, McKernan's, is gonna come tow it for free? Or you had a tow business, you're gonna charge us, and we're gonna have money back.
The person that owns the vehicle.
Or they don't get it back.
Or they don't get it back.
Well, you're gonna, do you still have a tow truck?
No.
You don't? That's too bad, because I was gonna see if you'd do it. But, you know, maybe we'll call McKernan's and see if they didn't pound it. But at the same time, we'd have to see, because we do have ordinances. But it's costing somebody, and I can't see McKernan's coming up if they're not getting paid. Because some of these vehicles, obviously, I don't give a shit about them.
You gotta do something.
Oh, I get it. But then I come up and I move the snow pile to alleviate the problem, and you still yell at me. So I lose.
So the person that owned the vehicle should have been.
I yelled at him too. I alleviated the problem, and then I got two people pissed off at me, the person I moved the stove for and the person I yelled at, so it's an ill-lin状 situation.
If the person that owns the vehicle gets it, you get it towed out of there, you got an ordinance, they have to pay the bill or they lose their vehicle. You know, it's not on the borough.
Do we have authority to give out parking tickets?
Citations. Really, I mean, yeah, we probably could, then, you wanna go to court? You're a volunteer, I'm a volunteer, you wanna go to court to do it?
I'm just asking.
I think we probably could.
I have a ticket book, but, yeah, I can give a ticket out. I'll tell you what, I made up these things to put on people's cars that you can't park here. And I come in the next morning, and I was called everything but a white girl on that phone because somebody had a little piece of paper put on their thing. I'm not putting a target on me. I'm sorry, I'm not, some of these people in town are unstable.
Can I go move the snow and make it something tangible? I could yell at F by presidents because I'm moving the snow.
Instability is born from a lack of, you have to say this is the way it is, and that's it. Instability is when people think they have the right to argue and think they have the right to complain. And when you're in a public position and you're putting out ordinances and whatnot, it's up to you to uphold them and do so across the board.
And I agree. And my agreement, when I, I did not ask to take on a code enforcement position. I said I would write letters if they needed a letter.
We're really gonna have to get somebody that's dedicated to doing this and take them to court and spend the time and go on in and prosecuting this because we have the ability, we have the ordinance to do such. But I mean, I've got a few jobs. I don't know about you, do you wanna go do that, spend the time? We're just asking.
I'm just asking how, you know.
No, that's the way we deal with it.
You gotta back it up too.
Well, I get that, so we either pay somebody to do it.
People running around town saying, well, I'll have to listen to you.
We either pay somebody to do it, or we do it ourselves, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Food for thought. All right, anybody else wish, or to address counsel? If not, we'll move on, and the public is, no, so. All right, mayors, yeah, mayors, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I need you to swear on that. You wanna show your.
You can just repeat after me, raise your right hand. Aye, say your name. Do solemnly swear.
Sow. Sow. We swear.
That I will support and obey.
That I will support and obey.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Report. Not too much, I just, I want to thank you for being here. I wasn't here last month, I'm sorry for missing the meeting, but I just wanna remember Chuck and thank him for his service. He was a really wonderful man, so. I hope that we can find a way to honor him in coming months and years as probably did with Kennedy. So I thank you for being here. I think it speaks volumes about the kind of person you are, that you would step up and take your spot. So with that, I don't have too much else, but I just, I feel like it's worth saying, reminding everyone that this is a body of volunteers that give their time for the best interests of this community. And again, if you have a problem, you're open to run for office. You can go get a form and run. And I think the belittlement of Brett, and frankly, I understand where you're coming from. I see you obviously dedicated a lot of time and research, and I frankly wish I had as much free time to put together reports like this as you do, but I think there needs to be a line drawn on how we treat other people in this town that is full of volunteers. Every single person gives countless hours of their own time, and we're gonna treat people like this. I understand you're trying to make a point, and I respect that. But at the same time, can we not just recognize that we're all doing the best for each other and for our community? So with that, I wanna recognize the Rotary for taking down the Christmas lights, Tom. Thank you for doing that and for all that you all do. So that's all for me, thanks.
Motion to accept the mayor's report. Second? Gotta speak up. Most of the mayors second, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, maintenance report. Barb, what was today, I see they had it out, or was it out there, maybe it was up prior, I saw the truck out.
That's for that exhaust problem.
Oh, okay.
He ordered a piece to go on, Brett, you probably know more.
Well, the guys were here today.
Okay, it's a clamp or something to go on it that he thinks is the problem.
I just saw it.
It's when the diesel revs up or something, it's.
I was working across the street, you saw it sit there, and I meant to try to get a hold of Rick, and I failed to do so.
Is it for when it burns that DEF or something?
Maybe, maybe.
I'll tell you what, me and John hopped in here last Tuesday to go down to the pump station and deal with an issue, and I couldn't get over how loud it was in the cabin. What is this roaring? And they said, well, that's what we were saying, it's, there's something going on. So it was driving fine, but the sound of it is like something's coming by.
I mean, I know that'll be on next month's report, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I'll have them let you know what they find out.
Okay, is any comments on the maintenance report? I have a motion to accept it.
A motion to accept the maintenance report?
Second? Most of the mayors second it, everybody in favor, say aye. Everybody opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, well, for the sewer maintenance report, they had no overflows last month. Everything was fine. We had another DEP surprise inspection in regards to a report of uninformed and wrong report. There was a pump station overflow, a East End pump station. It was not indeed an overflow, it was a drain line they had to dig out and show that it was fine. The two-hour inspection with Mellie Lewis, she reviewed all of the new pump station and sewer plant information, including paperwork, all of the buildings and everything. And unfortunately, I don't have the report, but everything was satisfactory to her down there, so everything was fine. Happy with the way everything is going right now. The guy's been taking good care of plowing and trying to get things taken care of down there when it's drifted, so.
When was that?
When did we have the DEP inspection? What was, Barb, Tuesday?
It was last week, wasn't it?
Last Monday, yeah.
Monday or Tuesday.
No, last Wednesday. Last Wednesday is what it was, because I was in Hazelhurst working with somebody from Pennsylvania Royal Water, and I had five minutes.
Twenty-six then.
Luckily, I was able to get up there, and that report will be available. And when we get it in, I'll be sure to disseminate it to everybody.
Okay, please do, because we had an email sent out last month that, um, I had to take screenshots of it because I, for some reason, my printer wouldn't hook up to my phone. Um, just give me one second. This is in regards to the, um, the sewer project estimate that it was voted on at last month's meeting on February second. Was that when our meeting was?
Third.
Okay.
First Monday.
Well, this email was sent out on February fourth from Jesse Wagner. And it said, sorry for not sending, the title was the sanitary sewer project estimate, which we voted on, on the second. I voted no. And it just says, hey, everyone, sorry for not forwarding this center. This is the same sheet that was passed around last night. The updated sewer estimate with expanded scope of work. And then when you go down, the original email from Marty English was sent out on January sixteenth, um, to Jesse.
Hmm, that would have been the, uh, first estimate that was approximately three million, just to be clear, in January.
No, this said it was the same sheet that was passed around last night at February's meeting. This was sent February fourth, it was voted on the night before.
Oh, alright, yep, that's right, that's right. My mistake.
And I just, you know, I want to make sure that every member is kept up to date on this because when you have a few members getting an email on January sixteenth, we vote on it and then two days later, the rest of us get it. I can't make an informed decision when I'm presented with paperwork and that's me. Five to seven.
I do believe that's, is the sewer department report not pertinent to my maintenance report?
Pardon?
Said, I believe that's for the sewer department committee report, not my maintenance. I don't have anything to do with that.
Well, it just has.
No, it's fine. When we get to sewer, I mean, do you have any questions on my sewer maintenance report?
I'll definitely try to.
As far as keeping people informed to make decisions, though, it doesn't really help much to take a vote on something and then send the information out to everybody else two days later. I don't see how that vote could possibly be legitimate.
Everybody had that that night, didn't they?
Right before the meeting, but when other people have that information on January sixteenth, that's ample time to send it to others.
I just was making sure everybody had the stuff. I'm sorry.
Right, and that's why I apologize. I'm saying I was wrong there. I will try to be better in the future.
Okay, any, uh, motion to accept the sewer's report, sewer maintenance report?
Make a motion.
Most of the mayors, Oona, second?
I'll second.
Second by Jesse. Everybody in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, uh, borough managers. Yeah, borough manager's report.
Okay, I received a notification that we've received our twenty, twenty-five liquid fuels in the amount of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-six cents. It was deposited. It's in the placate account. Um, I sent the new list of committees to everybody that President Garrett's had made up. Um, several code enforcement letters were sent out for parking issues. In the wake of the general freeze and federal funding, I wanted to check in and see if you guys, um, if there is any concern about the program for funding and the more grant to the energy audit and design. Their response I received back was that right now they're still paying the invoices that have been submitted, but it could change. Um, she stated, we have two years from the awarded date of the grant, October ninth, twenty twenty-four, to use the funds for their usage. Just wanted to know if you all wanna hold off or let it, or schedule the audit. It's up to you guys. Um, our audit companies requested the records to begin their yearly audit. They're reperforming an audit on the sewer authority books for the time that they were in control. And the rest of the sewer will be included in the borough's audit for the time after the borough's October. That's all I have.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward as long as we're paying the bills. And if we have to put the bill, we will, but we definitely need to get.
Do you wanna motion it?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Does everybody know about that, right, and what we're talking about?
Yeah, we'll be on the hook until they start deciding to pay again. We pay it anyway.
Well, right now, they're still paying, so as long as.
Yeah, they said they'd be still paying, paying.
They're paying the invoices now, so.
Let me add the following motion.
Okay, Brett's making an informed motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Jesse seconds it. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Make a motion to accept the borough manager's report. Any second for that?
Second.
Second by Oona. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Just remind people, I'm not hearing one way or the other, whether you're for it or against it, that goes as they vote towards it, that you're in favor. Okay, everybody had time to look at the minutes that was sent out to you prior to the meeting. Motion out or just standing approved? Yeah, stand approved is read. Okay, approval of president's report, payment of bills for the borough.
Make a motion to accept the board's report, payment of bills.
Okay, most of them made. Get out of the second.
Second.
Second by Oona Parra. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, approval of sewer department financial report and payment of bills.
Motion to accept the sewer, uh, sewer report and payment of bills.
Okay, most of them made to accept the report and the payment of bills. Get out of the second. Okay, motion been made and seconded. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, committee reports. Maintenance of streets and buildings.
I don't like, I think the guys have been doing an admirable, admirable job taking care of things. This winter has been a more traditional winter. But we've had a lot of ice in the middle of it, which is a bit of pain, plus the salt shortage that I talked about earlier. We're getting towards the end. We're not out of the woods yet by any means, but we're, we're getting there. warmer weather coming and the fifty degree temperatures that are supposed to be coming. Hopefully that'll help them bust up some stuff up to the curbs, as Mitch pointed out, that, you know, need a little attention. I'm sure they'll, they'll get there and we'll talk to them about it, busting things up and moving things. I would say though, in the future, we take care of the parking lanes, but the, the sidewalks and the business district, district, we've done for years and we've helped out in front of businesses. But we've also had cooperation from property owners. If you're not willing for us to put stuff in your vacant lots because you don't want salt, etc., well, then you can get your own removal of the snow that comes out of the parking lane. We're just, as far as I'm concerned, not gonna be tolerating with it. Two years in a row, we've paid to replace mulch from flower beds that, well, you got a little too deep. Well, when there's three foot of snow and you get in there and there's ice, you don't know that you're pulling something out. Had to replace bulbs and etc. We go above and beyond to try and help out the few businesses that we have, but if there's gonna be complaints, why? You, you can pay somebody and then you can replace your own stuff. We'll clean the parking lane, which Penn duck used to. Until there was a complaint about Penn Duck winging it back to the curb, we never had to put the plows down. Cause our trucks aren't, the plows aren't high enough. They don't go fast enough to actually throw it off. And then everybody pushes the little wall against the, uh, curb so that it can't get over. And then you get a big mound like this against the curb and everybody goes, well, how come they're not cleaning it? Well, because they can't properly clean it. And every day, they're not gonna take the front end loader out and do it, or we can contract it out at, at, at a hell of a price. So I think our guys do a good job and I think they've been doing well. And, uh, give them an out of boy, cause I've done the job and it's not that easy.
Okay, finance and insurance. Barb, I don't have my list with me.
Um, that would be Oona, but she's not.
Right.
I don't have anything to add. Everything's good on that part. I reported that the audit has started. They've started collecting data, so.
Did you make any hard copies for anybody?
For what, you?
My committee list.
I gave everybody in their, in their thing.
Alright.
There just need, you need a correction on, uh, Brianna's phone number. It should be one eight instead of seven.
I know. I don't, I don't want on either one of those committees. I don't have any, this right here is when I spare time for me. I, uh.
We try to spread things around to everybody in council, so.
Not that you had, I don't know what committees you're on, but you don't have to go to every meeting. You just have to be a liaison and talk to those people.
There's no meetings.
So, so I don't, okay. So I'm just the go-to for those two things and.
Which one, what I put you on? I can't. Parks and fire department.
There's meetings for the fire department, but all you gotta do is talk to the fire chief or president.
Yeah, I mean, if you talk to Scott, you know, about what's been going on, if he has anything, usually he'll come down himself and bring things up, but if he doesn't, you're the liaison to make sure it's right here to council.
Either him or Jason. Jason's the president.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, Jason's the president.
Thing is, do you people need anything from council? Everything good? No? Okay, sweet. If they have, they have a complaint, they come to you first.
Okay, personnel.
Um, I, uh, I talked to Barb, who would be under that facet. Uh, she said there were no complaints. Um, I did not get a chance to meet with, uh, Rick and John to talk to them about if they had any issues. I will make sure to do that tomorrow at nine AM.
Okay. And also, if you can't get in to see them, just get their cell phones, mobile phone, and.
Fair. I can do that.
Talk with them over the phone. Okay, community development, planning and parks. Right?
There was nothing. Did we get any bids for the pocket park?
Uh, yeah.
What?
The pocket park or the?
No, um, I'm not even sure. Their, their goal was to put it out the beginning, the end of February, beginning of March, and have the bids due by the end of March.
What was the lady's name that, uh, was on the phone with? She retired and come back?
Yeah, I'm trying to pick it. Her name Beth. Was her name Beth? She was the one for the brand. But Steve Seth is the one that's taking care of getting the bids ready.
She was pretty regimented of how she wants things.
Oh, well, they're good. It's just that as spring gets closer.
Well, I know, that's what I thought when she was picking, or said dates and stuff. I thought, no, ma'am. I don't know if we're gonna get any, you know, thing, cause people have their slate full and then they will put prices in, but it's gonna be up here, cause, you know, I know if I have a lot of work going on and somebody wants something, you know, I'm not gonna do a real, uh, regular price without, uh, you know, inconveniencing myself or.
Well, you think he'd have to have it all together and out for bittering.
Well, that lady there from the state's the one that was setting everything up. Okay, fire department. Dr. Scott, the other day, he didn't seem to have anything. Other than fact that they'll be having their gun bash coming up here, is it May?
Another state weekend, I think.
Mother day weekend. Okay. Library. Barb, you weren't at the last one, were you?
No, I didn't make it.
I got in there late. I had, uh, stuff I had to finish up with Rotary. I don't recall anything. But they did have a guy coming. I don't know if anybody got a chance to come in from the county. He does, uh, what was that program?
Master gardener.
Master gardener. I guess he was really interesting. I, that was a bad weekend day for me, cause we were doing a fundraiser for the Boy Scouts and I would like to have been there and listened to this guy, cause some is really interesting, the literature I read on him.
What, the jugs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not too complicated.
I know, but it's just, I mean, I think it's neat for people that are wanting to, you know, do some other directions on planting and whatnot. But I feel Courtney's doing a excellent job on, you know, getting programs and getting things in there for kids. Okay, code enforcement. I don't recall anybody having anything on that right now, other than.
No, moving cars.
Oh, I just sent a couple other letters out for garbage. People need to understand they should have garbage removal weekly.
Yeah, when it builds up with the picture that I was showing.
Yeah, it's, that's just unbelievable.
Why somebody thinks they can get away with that is.
The coolest part was the hate about the snow until recently.
Was, uh, the residents or the?
Yeah, residents.
Yeah, I could show you after the meeting. I can show you if you're interested.
Okay, Jesse, sewer operations maintenance.
Alright, um, we've, uh, I guess the, the biggest thing that I, I wanna, um, make mention of is, we've had a number of, um, I guess, complaints, uh, you know, things going on that, um, simply put, members of this council and employees are getting harassed. You know, this, this is a big issue. Um, I'll, uh, go into a more formal statement with, you know, uh, if you don't know me, there's, there are newer members on the council as well as new members in the, uh, public audience. Uh, I'm Jesse. I have a, uh, background in civil engineering, which covers a number of things, including wastewater, which is why I was put to the operations, uh, committee. Um, I really wanna learn more about, uh, wastewater as well as I would like to know more about politics, which is why I was on the wastewater committee. The, the authority back when it was existent and then moved up to this and doing the same thing. I'm making this statement, cause I, I feel like there's a, a member of the council that is not working with the council and possibly even working against it. I feel in part, this is due to a personal grievance. Before anything, I'd like to state that, uh, sewer property is not open to the public. We have trespassing signs. I believe this member, uh, of the council has overstepped by giving permission without clearing it with another member of the sewer committee or even a second council member. This permission was given to a former employee and this opens up the borough to multiple liability issues. Liability issues of former employees getting injured on the property. And secondly, with their knowledge, have the ability to e- affect and influence the system that may not have been touched in the world. In the last two months, there has also been DEP issues that have been brought up that I, being the sewer committee head, was last to know. Each of these two times, said council member has returned the DEP's calls. Of these two calls, one was erroneous due to a lack of knowledge of the sewer system. All of this is putting us under a larger microscope in the DEP and it is, I think it is in the interest of the public to get the cap order removed. These actions may extend it regardless of the credibility of the call. Another issue that needs to be addressed with the sewer system is that we've agreed upon an estimate cost, general cost and general timeline that we'll be fixing and updating our outdated sewer system. Very same council member has attempted to change the scope of work of the engineering that we done on this upgrade. This, uh, is an issue not only because, again, I was second to be told after the fact, as well as this could affect the estimate, the cost or the general time that this may be completed, further impacting the Penn Vest loan in the same fashion. This may also cost, uh, borough money due to the Eats Group. This may also cost the borough money due to the Eats Group having to switch and switch back based on what our requests are. Before my time on the committee, I also noticed this particular council member was requested to do a write-up of a proposal. They refused vehemently and reiterated that verbally is fine. It is also worth noting the same council member that contacted the lawyer on the council caused a member about their validity of their seat. This was, this came back from the lawyer that the said seat is acceptable as there was no court case, again, costing this committee money and borough. As a second statement, I'd also like to note that nearly every month, Mr. Hydock requests time to speak. We, uh, as always allow, as we would give any resident coming in with a concern, time to speak. In the previous meeting, he stated he had a Class C license and was working towards a Class A license on the job to provide better service for us, this borough. Just for better understanding of these classes, as you may not know, these are given by the Pennsylvania state. A Class C license means the wastewater can do approximately 100,000 gallons per day to 1 million gallons per day. This license satisfies our sewer system. Upping this license is only an, uh, an operator will then be allowed to operate a sewer system up to above 5 million gallons per day. We are well within the Class C licensure and any further push in this fashion is irrelevant. Yet this person is, as quoted, studying to help the community. No, if this is the reason for licensure, then he is intending to also apply for larger committee, uh, communities. On this committee, uh, community's time while subsequently arguing, Mr. Morgan doing the same is an issue as he has multiple wastewater, uh, jobs. I would like to state that our per operator, Mr. Morgan, is not licensed. This is just reiterating something that Mr. Hydock has said a number of times in previous, um, iterations and continues to harp. However, he is working under the Eats Group as an, uh, the Eats Group is an engineering firm and licensed operator. They not only manage a number of wastewater systems, they have put their trust and verifications in Mr. Morgan. It is also worth mentioning, Mr. Hydock does have a background in this area. He's an operator. And I have a civil, uh, similar background with my engineering. I am not and will not directly or indirectly state that he or I have a better understanding than one another. But I am, uh, stating that Mr. Hydock's accusation that he is the utmost knowledgeable person out of everyone is simply erroneous. This is stated while Mr. English from the Eats Group was sitting here at the council table, having early public address to the council, post-business public response that Mr. Hydock had exactly zero questions, zero suggestions and even left the room while the engineer of record and certified operator was talking. I also would like to respond directly to an accusation that Mr. Hydock stated that I voted on a 2025 budget that had an increase for Mr. Morgan's pay. This is simply untrue. The total budget for employees from twenty four, uh, twenty four to 2025 went down approximately $5,000. And last week, we reduced $2,000 further for the gas stipend that Mr. Morgan is no longer receiving. Furthermore, year over year, we have saved approximately $40,000 by releasing our former sewer employee. Beyond everything I've said, I would like to make a motion to the council, um, that if it is not already, uh, policy that borough property is only accessible to borough employees or as an in-person escort. If anyone has been allowed access by a single member of the board, I believe this motion should supersede said access. Furthermore, written consent must be provided to enter borough property with at least four signatures of council members. Without written consent, this should be considered trespassing. The four signatures was actually stated by the attorney on this matter. I would like to think, uh, again, another motion that may need to be done is we are placed to act on, in committees on their respect. Members outside the committees are welcome to suggest questions to have answered or forwarded on, but should not act directly as this is firstly stating that the president of the council is unable to properly oversee the committees. And secondly, a slate against the other members dictating that they are unable to manage their projects. It is also an interrupt of current intentions such as scopes of work that would change estimates, changing end costs and even changing the current timeline of projects. Uh, again, if this needs to be motioned, I will gladly motion this. In closure, I would like, uh, I would be willing to say at least some, if not of all of these individuals' actions, uh, are due to a personal grievance with a member of the council. But I will request that if they are of personal nature, I urge everyone to set aside personal grievances and work as a team with the rest of the council. This means talking outside meetings, sharing opinions, suggestions and questions respectfully. I do believe that we all have the best, uh, public's best interest at hand. I would like to remind everyone in the room that we do have a common goal, have that as a common goal. Making sure that going forward, it's in the boroughs, the residents and constituents' best interest. I guess the, the things I would like to state are, do you feel that both of those items need to be motioned?
As far as being on borough properties, I mean, I would be in this building, it can be, you know, what do you?
Oh, okay.
Pay as far as.
That's fair.
I was gonna bring up something a little later, but, uh, so any non-public borough property, i.e. anything that has signage to the fact that it is not without authorized, uh, access, which could be the borough lots, the sewer properties, pump stations, community park in this building are authorized. This building's authorized to the lobby. It's not authorized in the garage or in any other facet to the general public other than we'll need open it to them. So I think a motion should be made with the fact that without a vote of the council, not just for signatures unless it's an emergency situation, would be warranted. And I, I had put some thought into this as well. Um, okay, borough lot, be the maintenance committee, okay? The borough manager, maintenance supervisor, council president, or the chairperson of that committee would give authorization to allow somebody there, i.e. deliveries, et cetera, maintenance workers from, uh, contract firms. Sewer plant, council president, chairperson, daily operator. So that, uh, deliveries of chlorine, et cetera, can be made. But as far as just any person that happens to be on council or any person that they feel can go down there at any time, no. And that be made and voted, motion seconded and approved by council now, if council just deems that they need to allow somebody down there, then they can come back to a council meeting and be voted. We have the, uh, email correspondence from our solicitor stating that it has to be by a majority of council at a meeting. There is nothing to really dictate there other than put it in the minutes so that it can be, you know, of a policy. So I would make a motion that, to that effect. No person is authorized to be on the private borough properties without the authorization of the council president, the committee chair, the borough manager or maintenance supervisor or day-to-day operator without vote of this council. That includes council people without the vote of this council.
So what are you hiding?
Be the policy.
What's the problem? What are you hiding? You can't say sabotage because you can't get into buildings.
No, you could. You can use some of the plot. Now, I made a motion. We'll make it second. We'll have time for discussion. But here's the deal, uh, it's not fair for me to be down there. Now, I refuse to believe that you're too ignorant to see that having a former disgruntled employee on borough property isn't a huge liability. I, I, I just, I just don't believe that to be the case. Second, anybody that wants to come down shouldn't be allowed, even council person. If you fall and hurt your back, is that not a liability to this municipality?
I see what you're saying there, but I have to object to the use of the word disgruntled because I don't see how any of this could be taken personally.
A person that we fired for cause years ago.
Hmm, you should probably.
Let me finish, please. Nothing here is of personal nature. It's all documented. It's all testing. It's, it's, it's nothing personal. I see nothing in here that points to one particular person in a derogatory manner on a personal level. These are, this is data that you can't argue with. All the, all the supporting, um, documents are here. It's, it's nothing slanderous. It's nothing, uh, personal. I, I don't see that here. So I can't, I can't go along with the whole disgruntled former employee. I would say it's more a very knowledgeable former employee who has firsthand experience, knowledge and, uh, is trying to put this in layman's terms for those out there that don't know all of this, these tests and the, you know, the, the s- the sedge levels and all that. I think all he's trying to do is put it in a nutshell so that the tax paying people out there that, um, never really, no pun intended, gave a crap either way what was going on. They just paid their sewer bill every month. I think that's all he's trying to do is point out how it went wrong, what can be done to fix it without this huge price tag that was on the estimate and how it could have been prevented and how to prevent it from happening again. Because he's, we've got 60 years worth of nothing and then all of a sudden, in a few years, all of a sudden, we need all this work done. I think that's all he's trying to do and it's like I said last month, if you focus on what is being said instead of who is saying it, it really does make sense and is worth giving time looking into and considering.
And he is the only person immediately available.
No, we don't, we don't contract a firm to deal with that. We would rather take somebody that is a disgruntled ex-employee from two of our different organizations and put them down there. We, we made the motion.
The word disgruntled.
Uh, that's, that's fine. That's my, it's my turn. You can disagree all you want. I still made the motion.
If we're going to sit here and say that the public needs to quit harassing people and taking things personally, that goes for us too.
That's not harassment. That's exactly what it is. It's disgruntled, fired employee, terminated twice.
How about a public commenter? How about we just call him that?
Well, no, I called, but I called and I still made the motion and, uh, Mr. President, I hope you.
In respect, we have to give it as well.
For a second.
I'll second it cause it's just reworded and it seemed to be an issue of what I had said. And I can adjust my statement. I have no issue with that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Uh, Barb, I'd like a pro-call vote on this, please.
Ona?
Your favorite.
Jesse?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Um, Frank?
No.
The, Jane?
No.
Motion been made. Or motion been approved.
I don't know, you're reading this stuff from 2006 to.
Well, that's cause you wanted to call him disgruntled. And I'm saying, he's not. I'm saying he's looking out for the community. I'm saying he's qualified to answer my question.
Mr. President, anything else?
Um, I have a second motion.
But, you know.
What's the second motion?
It was, uh, that things should be done through the committees, whatever they're outside.
So Frank called, talked to the engineer and suggesting things should be changed and we had already voted on the scope. I know that that needs to be in a case of motion, but people are gonna keep calling and trying to change things and.
Well, it's funny because what the, he sat here, he said, you can call me anytime. That's what he said.
The, the borough at large. It's fine, but we're still gonna change the scope of work without having a meeting.
Well, you've got nothing, you know, you've got no clue.
No, that's why we're trying to, trying to straighten this out so that committees can, can do.
Okay, a simple thing is aeration, which you know, we talked about and rebuilding the pumps, not the electric and actually getting it running. Really would not be very hard to do. And Marty actually said he would write something up on that.
And I, and I talked to Marty about it and had you actually listened to what he was saying, we had different or, uh, added aeration into that, we had talked about that in the last meeting, but it was just, oh, we're gonna change it. Well, this whole aeration system, I'm not disagreeing that going back to three horsepower might be okay. But Marty also specified that four pumps and those large ponds aren't gonna do it. They're not pumps, they're mixers. I mean, I feel that it's, you know, changes to the scope should not be made without the committee and, and a vote.
Well, if you actually answered an email or even read an email.
I read emails. I just don't answer.
I know you do. So it's very useful, like, that you.
You're very good.
Person that wishes to.
It's not my fault that you can't work with me. I think that's what you said.
Is that what you say?
Well, if we're going to talk voting and emails and stuff, I'll bring up what I brought up before. This email was sent out from Marty English on January 16th and only went to a few select people. And then it was sent to me after.
Do we not, uh, do we not forward all the, or, uh, print everything off in the boxes and do we forward everything?
It wasn't, no, this.
Okay, but I think it's everything printed off in the boxes. I mean, this, this building's open most days.
Well, I believe that.
If we need to do a better job of forwarding things.
I guess it's me. Maybe I should be.
Again, the thing that needs to be stated on that email front, uh, in the case of the January 6th, that is my fault. I did forget to forward it up. Actually, before the meeting, that would have been a huge deal.
Yes, and it was voted on.
And I apologize.
Some people have two weeks to consider it and other people have about five minutes, so I don't.
Well, I think it was included in the packet. I mean, I could go through back and look at my packet, but anything that we vote on, all that information is usually in the packet or it's sent to you guys before it.
The actual estimate, no, it wasn't included in the packet.
That was sent, that email was sent to me on February.
It was not. It was my fault.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm taking responsibility.
I normally put everything in the packet.
I can take responsibility where it's due and it is due.
And, and if it came up at just that meeting, the appropriate time, like, hey, I've had two minutes to look at this, we could have waited a month.
I would know, but everybody does.
Well, I don't know that you've articulated that to the point that night.
Well, it's interesting.
I'm forgetting it, but it's already been motion seconded and moving forward.
How could I say that? I didn't get the emails for.
But you're sitting here saying, oh, don't do this, don't do that, don't do the other thing, but you sent an email, you don't hear the, you don't hear nothing, so. What? And what was it you said to me, Tom? Oh, you know as much as everybody else? Well, maybe that's not enough.
This is the, a forum to bring those up. If you send out an email and you do not get a response, ask it here. Then it goes on the minutes. It's on record. All of that is very.
And that's very useful for getting information, right? I'm, I'm angry you didn't answer my email. But that's good for information, right?
See, in civilized times, we used to talk to each other on a regular basis, but that can't happen anymore. We don't have anything on the sewer negotiating committee as of yet.
No.
Jesse, I.
You're kind of like diverting.
I'm not, uh, yes.
Yes.
I don't think it needs to be put into a motion. Cause I mean, if he does talk to you, Marty did say that day, that evening that, you know, if you had questions or, you know.
Questions, as long as they're not changing the state.
Right, right.
Marty said he would look into it.
I know, I talked to Marty.
Yes. And Marty agreed that it really wouldn't be a bad idea. So. Basically, all you're doing is isolating your little bubble.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing.
That's what you're doing. You expect people to make decisions, but they don't get the information that we're supposed to get.
I think, I think anybody that really truly wants information and doesn't just wanna cause havoc gets it. And I'm gonna make a statement here and I think we move on, cause I've just not had enough of this. For the past three, four months, and I've noticed it more since middle of December, when I found my father dead, I've been going through a rough time and I've been sat here and anybody that watches this meeting on Facebook, I mean, you read it in the newspaper. But if you actually watch the meeting, I've sat here very quietly. I've been subdued. I've been quiet. I've been retracted. I've taken the abuse. I've taken the, taken the, the hammering and that's fine. I find it reprehensible that you people, less than two weeks after my father died, started coming after, putting cameras at the sewer plant, just attacking, testing my resolve, seeing how far I could be pushed. One of my best friends, while he was well older than me, died. Keep pushing, keep pushing. I'm up against it. You can test this resolve all you want. I've said it once and I'll say it again. I'm the only person that's not up for election. And when I am, I'll run again if I decide to. I will not leave this council until this community leaves me and says, no, we don't want your leadership anymore. Or till I'm set my Ed Morgan up on NIBO. I think I do a hell of a job. And I find it just disgusting, the amount of time you people try and push on this, like I haven't saved this community $30,000 every year. I'm not gonna listen to your shit. You've had enough time to talk. But this has been the toughest. I'm talking now. You're not. I don't give a shit, Frank. This has been the toughest three months that I've been through and you people just poke. And I hope the citizens really see who's at the best interest because you. because you've been on council, I don't know how many years, and I've told you once, I've told you, I'll tell you again, you've got nothing done. I've forgotten more than I've got done on this council you'll ever get done. That, that's my statement and Theresa, no, I don't have any comment. You can take it off the recording. That's exactly what I have to say on the matter. Mr. President, I'm done. I'd like to move on. The Sister City program is not here. The five-year plan is with everything else. The library lights, let's go.
I would just like to make one comment for all that stuff. We all have personal things that go on. We all have emotional things going on. There's a lot of people who have things going on in their life that you kind of have to leave out of the door because this is a brutal council and, you know, it, it is what it is. And I, I feel bad about your dad. I might have been the last person to talk to him. He called me a order of flowers and I called him, you know, I said I'd call him back and then he had a laser. I don't know. That could have very well been.
I, I appreciate that.
But there's, you know, it's not easy for, there's a lot of things that are easy for a lot of people, but we can't bring that and let that emotion or anything.
My statement speaks for itself. I appreciate it.
Everything else, you know? Uh, we've all had days where we had to deal with something really hard, but turn around and suck it up and go into work or, or deal with, you know, the public or whatever, you know, this.
I appreciate it.
Mr. President.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're all gonna have our differences and, you know, but we need to try to work together.
Exactly.
All right, five-year plan. Was there anything that we need to?
No, that, we'll start with that audit and we'll move on from there.
It should probably be struck until we get something with that.
Do you want me to take it off?
Yeah, it's, until it moves forward, there's no sense. It's been there for a year.
What? She has to go to the bathroom.
Sister City project.
Um, no, I think it would be good to leave there. I'm gonna spend some time in there. I know this is something Jocko and wanting to do, so. And I do think.
She really wants to get involved.
Yeah, and I think there's potential, so, um, I think we should keep it there. I'm gonna spend some time in the next couple of months to work on this because I think there's some potential, so you can leave it there.
All right, new business, uh, lights for the library. I think it, I know it's been brought up before as far as putting the lighting on the side of the building towards Casey's house. Is very poor. I mean, there's one light there that used to be by a side door that was there. And. Put the bathroom and remove that door? Yeah, when the bathroom was put in there, they took the door out and stuff. And anyhow, that's very poor lighting as far as like for the elections and stuff. For that sidewalk to be used out around there, so I, well, Brad had talked to him too, to Davis Electric about getting some lighting around there, around the side. I haven't looked at any of his quotes. He's got one for, uh, the outside lighting on that side, a price. Then he's got, uh, library, uh, emergency lighting quote because none of the emergency lighting, even on the inside, is working correctly. So we need to definitely be doing something there, but I didn't look at these. I didn't know if we need to be having somebody else. Of course, we need to, if we're gonna have somebody else pricing, we need to compare albums and balmers. Well, you gotta open it and see. I mean, I don't have to open it tonight, but you can if it's inside the quotable range or not. You know, there's, there's certain thresholds as far as quotes. We need to see, go on and get telephone quotes, what have you, or just have it done. Okay, Labor's to change the emergency exit signs, emergency lights and remote heads to get the library up to code and make it safe to exit in emergency or power outage. New exit signs, emergency lights, remove the heads, boxes for remote heads cable. A remote head needs installed in the entryway as well. This will require drilling a hole through the solid concrete wall and installing a box in that area. And his price comes out as far as doing this stuff was $1,514.40. Any thoughts on, I mean, it's something we're not up to code. We've thought it.
Does it have to be on the agenda?
What's that?
It's on the agenda. Lights for the library.
It's under lights for the library? Yeah, right here.
Yeah, no. I put mine away because why should I read it?
I mean, if you guys want, you could always make sure, make sure everybody gets a copy of it and vote on it next month. That way they can look at everything.
I mean, it's hypercritical. Library's not open much at night and it gets lighter every day. I sent Corbin with a flashlight. And I mean, if we want something else to be as far as bidding on that, lighting on the side, I mean, I don't have to put out the price here. It's not much different than what he has here for that. That's the thing. We're gonna price it. I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't read it out because that gives someone a chance. Install new LED lights in the soffit around the east side of the library from the front to the back. I choose a gimbal light so they could point, could be pointed straight down because of the soffit is at an angle. They're a little more expensive, he said. Right, that's the first thing I thought. Other story. So we wanna, if we know somebody else, you wanna get, get a price on that, uh, you know, we can. But, uh, and like Barb said, I can have copies of these.
That way everybody has a month to look at it and decide on what they want.
They've hired and they let it go for a month. Do that. You can have them get it out of the boxes.
Yeah.
I'm making motion to adjourn. Okay, motion to adjourn, second. Jesse, second, but my favorite.